P O four twelve Vestal Development Company LLC, one oh one dash one forty-one North Avenue East. Mr. Hale?
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Stephen Hale, Department of Hale. Hale representing the Advocate Vestal Development Co. Before before this board this evening, and I think you'll find the testimony interesting, to make use of the site that presently contains the storage of trailers and containers. And it is owned as we know it by Vestal. We were before the board, as you recall, on a go or some site improvements you mentioned with the Egress and Egress. But this involves essentially the same also containers and storage. But what's proposed here is to have the property now be leased by Vestal to accompany East Coast Warehouse and Distribution. They recently secured a contract with U.S. Customs and what's proposed, if mentioned with this site, is for screening of containers and you see how the facility will be laid out. Essentially, it will still be when viewed, containers on the site. What's also part of this application is the structures that are there will be demolished. There's probably maybe just one small building that's going to be demolished. And there is a office trailer that's proposed as part of this application. We have a detail to show you. In addition, we are doing site improvements which include landscaping. Doings site improvements which include landscaping and decorative fencing and painting which will greatly enhance the aesthetics and function of the site. So that's an overview of the application. It is in the Capacitian Road redevelopment plan and there are no waivers or barriers associated with that, this application. We've also received departmental comments, all of which recommend this application. And we did have the benefit of, as always, our consultants are due letters of life to us well in advance and at hearing to give our professionals an opportunity to respond to it. So if there were no further preliminary question or no preliminary questions, I would move to call upon David to testify in behalf of Vestal.
Mr. David, if you can, if you're doing any of your documents on this work, the testimony you're giving is now available to the committee. We see Luke, the committee manager, Claire.
Your name and address please.
G I B B O S. Two thirty-five Hertzwood Avenue, B I R C H W O O D in Cranford, oh seven oh one six. Mr. David, if you could provide the board with your position, Vestal Development Co.
Yes, my title is President. We are a family business.
And a little history of Vestal and its relationship with the city of Elizabeth?
Sure, Vestal is part of a family business, maybe more commonly known as Elbraon Development Co., Vestal's affiliate, Elbraon Development Co.
I'm sorry? Back up. That one is Elbraon.
Elbraon Development Co.
It is an affiliate of Elbraon. It has owned this property for over forty years, just as it's owned other properties for quite a long time.
And if you could forward a little background of this, of this property and what it's historically been used for?
Sure, it is used presently for the storage of shipping containers. It has been used for, that used for approximately forty years. Currently, the site is basically packed with millions and on these millions, shipping containers are stored. The proposed use is continuing to store those shipping containers, however, after the construction of all the improvements we've laid out, described in the application.
And I should seem to, in my opening statement, you've now entered into a lease agreement with a company called East Coast Warehouse and realize that one there, where I presented this, is here to testify this evening. But if you could provide the board with an overview of what they plan to do on the site?
Sure, East Coast Warehouse is a company, a business that's been in the city of Elizabeth and the area for a long time. And we always understood they had an outstanding reputation. We did enter into a lease with them. They have occupied property literally adjacent to our site for approximately twenty years. Again, you will hear from a, from the CEO of East Coast Warehouse. But they leased about a million square feet of building and property on Port Authority property adjacent to our site. We entered into a lease with them because they entered into a contract with U.S. Customs to service U.S. Customs on our site. So they're next door in the building and I understand they use the building or the services for U.S. Customs and they were used only on our site, also as part of services for U.S. Customs.
Thank you. And as I indicated in my opening statement and has indicated, plans are going to be site improvements made in conjunction with this application.
There are going to be site improvements made in conjunction with this application. And I have a question on what's there now. Can you please indicate what was proposed by way of site improvements? Certainly, the site improvements include pavement, good long-term paving specification, significant stormwater management improvements, a couple of retention bases and new underground lighting, new exterior lighting, new decorative fencing around much of the site and other fencing in other parts of the site, the same decorative fencing that we've done in other projects in the city. And it's significant landscaping around the frontage of the site, both on North Avenue and on Ikea Drive.
And I indicated also in my opening that we were here at the end of last year and then ultimately beginning of this year, we started with the other site, Egress and Egress. Please comment on that.
Yes, yes, we were before the board in January, first week of January of this year, to seek approval for a proposed traffic light at the entrance to the property. We put that traffic light on these plans as well for clarity and to perhaps orient to a site that they, they've seen in review recently. But the crew we see tonight is the other improvements beside them. The light wasn't really the January eight, subject to a condition which we're working on, and we now seek approval for the other improvements, excluding the traffic light.
And have you had an opportunity to review the various departmental comments and the review letter of our consultants, subject to comments that you may, while you're in here, have any comments, comply with any terms of condition?
Yes, we've reviewed all of those reports, including our consultant's letter, and I believe we can apply, we can comply with all of the conditions that we accept, that I think you will here from our engineer as to one, one proposed condition that has been worked out, is if something is not adequate other than that, we can comply with it.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. David at this time.
Commissioner, any questions? Yes, Mr. Chairman, two questions. In regard, excuse me, right in regards of your refuge collection, will you have a container on the site or will regional industry be collecting refuse?
I think I'll let our engineer testify further to that, but I can comment on this, that this site will be occupied almost entirely by containers that are already loaded and after they are scanned, they will leave the site. The only structure on the site that will generate refuse is, is the proposal office trailer, which is, I think, twenty-four by fifty-six feet. And again, I think I defer the rest of that response, Commissioner, to our engineer.
So you have a container on site that is saying?
I'm not sure. I actually don't recall that plans do have a dedicated refuse container on site. I think it's different case, we don't defer into the engineer will testify to that later in the testimony.
Okay, okay. The other question is, as you know, we are in the city, deeply concerned about recycling. What are you proposing, how are you going to do your recycling in any way?
In terms of refuse generated by the office trailer, I think we're flexible to that, and maybe we could, we could discuss that.
Will that recycling be done by the regional, because we're into regional industry or someone else outside of the source?
I'm not, you mean, you mean recycling of refuse and garbage generated by the employees in the office trailer? I, I think they can certainly comply with whatever this, this board required or further out of the law.
Since, I would think that since the trailer will be elusive, if they will have to follow the rules and regulations, as to who will pick it up, I guess that's something that's going to be.
I can address that briefly. We've just had meetings about this with other sites.
I'm going to get back to you.
Okay, I can address this very briefly and just these meetings, not about this site in particular, but other sites in Elizabeth. The way garbage pickup works with a recycling pickup is that the city will pick up from any facility, but they limit the amount of cans recycling they will pick up. The reasonably larger retailers and the larger industrial areas that generate more waste don't use city pickup is because they generate more than the city takes up. I think the city's limits of four cans per pickup. If this site generates less than four cans, will be, the trash will be picked up by the city in the curbside on Ikea Drive on the curbside, a little bit on better North Avenue East, the city will also pick up their recycling. Judging by the number of employees, they stated in their report that seem to be on site, I, I see this facility not generating all that much waste and that would be mostly picked up by the city, unless they opt for an outside parting. If they opted for an outside parting industry, it would go with the contract with that outside parting, pick up somewhere on site. Judging by, again, the amount of employees here, they could have city pickup either on Ikea Drive or North Avenue East. Just a little bit.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a little clarifying. Secretary, just a little clarifying for it. Just a little from Victor's statements here, says the facility's being used to inspect shipping containers and scan. Can you just elaborate? And because you mentioned U.S. Customs with that.
We do have a representative that is supposed here to testify as to the, what happens about. Oh, we have photographs to show you. Vice Chair, what are your thoughts?
Well, basically, I was asking questions about scanning too. I see that you scan eighty-five to ninety-three a day. How long approximately does it take to scan one container?
I will, I will definitely refer to the representative of East Coast. That'll be able to have a testimony coming. See, no other questions that any of the commissioners, another witness, please.
Yes, I'd like to, Ken. I'd like to call upon Jamie Overly.
James Overly, O V E R L A Y, eleven forty Polaris Street.
Yes, in Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
Is there a way you can please give your position with East Coast Warehouse Distribution?
Sure, I am currently the Chief Executive Officer of East Coast, have been with the company in approximately five years.
And if you could explain what I know is given to you, brief question on the company, but if you could give a little history of your company that's involved in this city or in placement in the city of Elizabeth?
Sure, East Coast Warehouse and Distribution operates approximately one million square feet of temperature-controlled warehouse space in the city of Elizabeth. And in addition to that, we have another five hundred thousand square feet in Jersey City. The Elizabeth facility, the one million square feet, is under lease with the Port Authority. The Elizabeth facility has been under lease for approximately twenty-five years. We currently employ three hundred personnel, seven, seventy of which are involved in our U.S. Customs operations. We also utilize approximately one hundred independent contractors in our transportation segment of our business.
Now, we had, with which?
It's a separate company called Safeway Trucking, and then also we have another company called TJ Transportation. These are all sister companies supporting.
I was familiar with building, this company called Rowmark.
Rowmark Logistics was also part of that family owned by the Elizabeth family who sold all these other sensitive areas with the exception of Rowmark.
That Elizabeth family is no longer part of these?
They own a small minority interest in the company.
That I'm familiar with. And if you could explain what's proposed for this site in particular?
Yes, what's proposed for this site is last year at the end of two thousand eleven, there was an existing customs contract that expired last year. They sent the customs examination services out for bid. We bid on that contract and we were successful and received an award of, by U.S. Customs, a five-year contract. As part of that, we were designated as a comprehensive container, container examination, storage facility. What that means is we provide all the different types of examinations of inbound cargo into Port of Newark in New Jersey. It consists of scanning of containers or the non-invasive scan of containers. It also involves the full inspection of cargo, the unloading of the cargo. We set it up in our warehouse, customs agents, then examine the cargo. We then reload the cargo back into the container, we put it in the storage facility and ultimately distribute it to its final destination.
Now, on this property, it's going to be in the scanning operations, is that correct?
That's correct. It's very simple. What, what will happen is U.S. Customs will identify a container for examination for scanning. And we will go to the port, we will pick up that container, we will drain that container back to our facility, this proposed facility. It will be stored and then at night, we will stage all of the containers in the various slots as identified on the schematic. The next day, the customs, U.S. Customs via mobile scanner will scan all of these containers, take a picture, basically just like they do at your work with your luggage. And based upon the results of those images, they will either identify that cargo in that container for further full strip examination, which will be moved to our warehouse section, or they will release the container and we put it into the storage section of our yard of the proposed facility, awaiting final distribution released by customs and ultimately will be delivered by either another truck coming in to pick up that container and deliver it to its final destination, or we in fact, as one of our services, can deliver it to its ultimate destination throughout the continent of the United States.
And one of the questions, and I know that the site engineer will address the, the site in more detail and the equipment, but if you could respond, I guess first to, sir, his question in respect to how does this actually work and then Vice Chair Ross's question on how long does it take?
Sure, the way, the way the actual scanning will work is containers are on their chassis, they are lined up in rows, and these mobile X-ray machines basically have, it has an arm, an arm like an L that goes, the, the body of the truck moves alongside the container, this L-shaped scanning device goes over the, the outside of the container and scans the unit. It goes in various rows, it has one row, then makes a turn and comes back and does another row. It takes approximately six to seven minutes to scan per container, each one of these containers. We're hoping that there's new equipment that's available that'll reduce that time, but right now, it's taking six to seven minutes per container to scan.
And what do you anticipate to be your hours of operation and number of employees at this site?
Six AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday. On this site, we have a administrative trailer. We expect to have somewhere between five to seven personnel who'll be responsible for inbound processing of the containers, some administrative function like invoicing to customers, and then also the outbound processing of the containers from the yard as well.
And you've had an opportunity to review the site plan and the parking spaces allocated for this facility. And I believe there's twenty spaces being provided. Do you feel from your experience that that would be more than sufficient for the operation?
Yes.
And what about buying of containers or vehicles and trucks coming, going from the site?
Sure, we expect, our, our history, we're currently conducting these examinations on four acres of our property on our warehouse facility now. And we have been averaging roughly seventy to eighty containers per day. So the inbound activity would be roughly seventy, seventy to a hundred containers per day and a like amount of outbound containers per day. So in total volume per day, we're looking at somewhere between one hundred and fifty and two hundred containers per day.
And one final, you indicated the number of employees that East Coast has with this contract that you now have with customs. And in addition to utilizing this site, do you anticipate hiring more employees?
We have, and that's, last year at this time, we had roughly twenty-five employees dedicated to this operation. We are now at seventy employees.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and I hope note that our next witness will have a photograph showing the trucks that Mr. Overly was referring to.
I'm going to ask you a question, if you'd like, for the commissioners. You said something about staging these things at night, and then you talked about the hours being daylight hours. These trucks, these containers are being brought onto the site, staged for the scanning at night, is what you're saying?
What I meant to say is within the yard at night. What'll happen?
As the employees work with their night?
Yes.
Okay, and these trailers being brought to this site are all entering and exiting from the North Avenue side?
They would not. They would enter through the Polaris.
Side that they're told is coming.
Right, that gave, but also keep in mind on our warehouse facility, the other portion of this that you can see is we have two other entrances to our facility that you could access through, we have an existing cut through on the lot right now that the Port Authority has approved, where in the interim until that final approval was given on that, that gate, you could come in through the other two entrances, come through the back of the building and enter through there.
So on the diagram that we're looking at up there, and I don't know what's, that's A two, I agree from here, that hasn't been introduced to them yet, but A two, the building to the right that we see a portion of, that's the end of East Coast Warehouse?
It's, yeah, actually over there, yes.
The other question I have is radiation.
Right, there's, there's obviously safety standards that U.S. Customs as part of this process, being part of, you, being part of requirements for this whole process. Let me just outline for you the way that our yard is laid out, there are some specifics about radiation and safety standards by U.S. Customs as part of this application. First off, there's a hundred feet scanning arm from the beam itself shooting in one direction. There needs to be a hundred feet into a safe zone, which it won't be shooting out. None, none of this scanning will occur shooting out, outside of the facilities. So a hundred feet inward is within the parameters of the U.S. Customs. There's also forty feet in the rear, safety behind the truck as it moves through, and fifteen feet on both sides of the equipment. We're currently operating, this is just, we are currently operating this on our facility. Keep in mind, this scanning occurred previously on the terminals. So the standards have met, have, have been in place.
The standards, and the standards are controlled by some federal?
Homeland Security.
But I'm saying the radiation standards, they probably help from your services or something.
Exactly.
And everybody's wearing a radiation badge, part of transportation, my attorneys, and Homeland Security. But everyone wears a radiation badge so that they are tested once a month to make sure that they haven't received too much radiation. Do your employees wear radiation badges?
No, they do not.
They do not? That's not a requirement?
Our, our employees are not allowed in the scanning facility.
Once we're doing the scanning?
Those are U.S. Customs.
You notice if they wear radiation?
They're, they're in the truck, and I mean, it's a very secure area. No one's allowed in the area. They have guards at each end of the facility. The guy, there are two employees, U.S. Customs employees in the truck, and they have two vehicles located at various sites in the yard to make sure no personnel enter into this secure area while they're scanning.
In general, the entire site will be a high-security site?
Oh, that is absolutely required, as you might imagine. We don't know what's in these containers. They've been flagged for examination and there's a heightened, heightened sense of awareness about these containers and security as well. Commissioners, any questions?
What mode of transportation do most of these containers, the?
Ship.
Sorry, what mode of transportation? I'm sorry. What mode of transportation do the containers, how would they come in? Do you know, by ship, by?
Yes, all of the containers, please, they have to come via ship. They come from Port Elizabeth, Port Royal. Any other questions, commissioners?
Chairman, just one question, just follows their orders. If a container is pinpointed to have, if a container is pinpointed to have by U.S. Customs to have, say, hazardous materials in, in the container itself, what's the procedure? What happens? If it's pinpointed to have, then, what I'm trying to say is if it has hazardous materials there, where does it go from there?
Well, there's, then obviously, it becomes the U.S. Customs, they have their procedures that they follow when they identify cargo that has, you know, would have those issues.
Would it stay on site? Is it inspected on site on your facility? You know, what I'm trying to say is that that container's pinpointed right there, it stays on site and U.S. Customs.
That's what I thought you were going there.
Yeah, I, I.
You're talking, I can't handle this question.
Okay.
Finish.
Finish your questions. Just to say, if something is pinpointed that has hazardous materials on site, who takes care of it?
U.S. Customs.
Where does it go from there? Does it stay on site? Is it inspected at your site?
I, I, it, it depends. It's possible. It depends on what's in the container, but that's a, you know, a Homeland Security issue that, you know, all we do is stage the containers, assist the customs in laying out the containers, and it's up to U.S. Customs to, to actually do the inspections and to deal with whatever issues that they, they find. We're not privy to a lot of those details for national security reasons.
So they would determine that, that.
a, you know, a homeland security issue that, you know, all we do is stage the containers, assist Customs in laying out, uh, the containers, and it's up to US Customs to, to actually do the inspections and to deal with whatever issues that they, uh, they find. We're not privy to a lot of those details for national security reasons.
So they would determine the date of that trailer?
Yes, they would.
And kinds of places are looking at, contraband, illegal drugs, uh?
All the above, all the above, anything you can think of. We, the different types of examinations that, that we conduct, uh, you know, for example, there's contraband, uh, looking for narcotics, uh, there's also what we perform agriculture examinations, for example, right now, there's a, in, uh, every load of rice, uh, that comes in from India, we are inspected because of the caper beetle, which you may have read about, caper beetle infestation. Um, we also do manifest examinations, uh, where, uh, the materials, uh, that are in the container compare to those of laying. Uh, so it, it, it just depends upon, uh, what's selected by Customs and, and we're happy to find answers.
Mr. Chairman, you have a question?
Mr. Schall first.
Uh, to your knowledge, has such an incident occurred where there is a very hazardous or potentially dangerous material detected? In recent, you know, six months, a year, eight years?
Yeah, I don't know if you're.
You're allowed to answer that or not?
I, there, obviously, uh.
There are certain rules under Homeland, there are certain rules under Homeland Security regulations which bind shippers to non-disclosure requirements or security reasons.
So we're not allowed to know if, if there is, uh, incidents have occurred?
Well, if there is an incident, Homeland Security, Homeland Security and DOT have your station over at this board does not.
Really? Okay, thank you. Recently, there was a, a case in the newspapers about a whole bunch of counterfeit materials that were brought in, shoes, uh, sneakers, uh, boat purses, is that some of the stuff you're fighting to?
Yes.
Guns, well, yeah, sneakers aren't a party item, but I was thinking of, uh, something more deadly.
Any material shipped by a reputable company that has any type of hazardous material that is flammable, combustible, uh, right, uh, reactive or reactive in nature, has to have certain labels on it, those are required by, uh, our export import laws, and one string, one survival here, they also have to be properly labeled to meet US Department of Transportation and Homeland Security requirements. Even something as small as a, a jar of four ounces of a sample of a, a flavor enhancer that has alcohol in it, may have, that, the case of those little four ounce bottles may have to be labeled as flammable because it has alcohol as a, as a component to it. Uh, so anything, any company ships automatically has to be labeled that way before it finds its way into the container, it has to be on a manifest, so, so then when it's unpacked and repacked, it's identified as to what type of product is in that particular container.
Commissioners, any other questions?
One more. When's your projected, uh, uh, date to start this examination?
Should, should commission be granted?
On this site, our goal will be, uh, May.
May of this year.
Of this year. We're currently examining, as I mentioned previously, uh, uh, we're performing these examinations on our own site right now at our warehouse.
Um, thank you, Mr. Oberle. Your next witness, Mr.?
Yes, I'd like to call on Richard Burr.
Richard Burr, B U R R O W, of Langen Engineering, 619 River Drive, Elmwood Park, New Jersey.
Mr. Burr has appeared before this board numerous times and we accept his credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Burr, your testimony so far this evening, and, uh, if you could please provide the board with an overview of the existing conditions at the site and the ones proposed by way of improvements.
Certainly, in order for Exhibit E1, which is an ideal photograph, this shows the site as exists today with shipping containers stored on it, uh, North Avenue to the south, IKEA Drive to the west, New England Motor Freight to the east, and the East Coast property to the north as described. Exhibit E2, to my right, shows a proposal, the same fourteen point three acre site will largely be paved. And the site splits into two, in an east-west, with an east-west divide. It will be split into two, divided into eastern portion and western portion. The eastern portion will be the storage of the trailers, which you can see are oriented up and down on the page, the non-up portion is where the trailers or containers will be scanned and need, these are oriented east-west on the page. I'm gonna hand out, uh, some photographs which are marked as Exhibits E3 and E4, and if you guys, my chair, you'll see. So Exhibits E3 and E4, um, show the, show the scanning truck in the process of scanning the trailers. So the trailers are, are containers are stationary and the truck will drive along the roads located in the western portion of the site. And that's the process that's repeated daily on the site, so, a simple operation. As far as the site operations go, you know, we have primary access drive off of North Avenue with the dedicated right turn lane off of North Avenue, could also make left turns into the site. There's two P-Res lanes offering left and right turns onto North Avenue, and as was mentioned by the representative from East Coast, the potential additional access from Polaris Street in the future. And you can see, there's approximately one point five acres of green space on the site. Previously, the site was one hundred percent imperious with the humid millions. So by adding this one and a half acres of green space on the site, we are already reducing the stormwater discharge from the site. But we met with the engineer, Mr. Vinegar, early on in this application, and he asked that we provide stormwater detention to further minimize any risk of flooding on North Avenue. And so there are two detention basins on North Avenue that are actually complying with the city and state requirements for stormwater quantity reductions. With respect to water quality, stormwater not quality, um, we are actually exempt from that requirement because of the reduction of imperious surface on the site. However, basin in the southeast corner, by default, actually provides sixty percent, um, TSS removal in accordance with the state standards. So there's certainly a few stormwater bonuses that are, there are a number of stormwater bonuses that are gonna be constructed as part of this site. The site will be secure, it will be fenced with an eight foot high decorative fence on North Avenue and IKEA Drive, where IKEA Drive runs the site. The other portions of the site, northwest, northern boundary and eastern boundary, will be an eight foot high chain link fence with bark of wire. As the representative from East Coast mentioned, the site is actually separated, within the site, there's another fence which runs north-south, separating the scanning area from the staging area.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna tell.
Which separates the scanning area from the staging area. The site is a fully permitted Capico City development area, and it is a permitted use and of storage of scanning of shipping containers falling under, uh, permitted use of warehousing, seaport container servicing and storage. The site complies with all of the gold requirements in this zone. There's one building proposed that is eight hundred and fifty-four square feet, and it complies with all of the setback requirements. We have twenty proposed parking space issues are also complies with the redevelopment plan. And in terms of landscaping, we are proposing twenty-two deciduous trees and ten evergreen trees, you can see these are located largely, uh, IKEA Drive and North Avenue, with four trees located on the eastern boundary, including the motor freight. We're also adding one hundred and thirty-nine shrubs. And I know that Mr. Vinegar's letter suggested we add some more landscaping, we don't have a lot of space on the site to add more landscaping, but to the extent that we can, we will work it out with Mr. Vinegar, where we're gonna have people seeing. In terms of site lighting, there is thirteen new light bulbs proposed on the site, these light bulbs are forty-three feet high, providing an even and safe distribution of light across the site. That concludes my description of the proposal.
And again, confirming you've had an opportunity to review the, uh, letter of report of consultants, and you just clarified that item one, your rating, rating issue, utilities, um, and that, any issues complying with any of those first conditions?
Good, that's good. And as I testified, um, although we are overriding water quality, this, um, proposal as shown is in compliance with the city and state regulations, and we intend to comply with the other comments in Mr. Vinegar's letter.
Thank you, I have no further questions, this is fine.
Commissioners, Mr. Burr's testimony, have you got any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, just quickly, uh, I noticed that we have security guards around the way, their station location, security?
Sure, sorry, that, that perhaps didn't mention, there is a guardhouse located, um, at the entrance driveway and gate, and there's sufficient storage both inbound and inbound and outside of the guardhouse.
So what are you talking about, one security or two, how many, how many security guards?
Um, judging by the size of the guardhouse, I would suspect it's one.
Just one?
Yes.
Last question is, is, do you have security cameras on site, is there camera? Do you have security cameras?
Yes, I believe so.
You believe so, or you're not sure, don't, don't say anything.
Excuse me?
I said, don't say believe, so I wanna know whether you have security camera, don't, I wanna hear believe so.
There are security cameras.
You sure?
Yes.
But your first question, your first statement was, you believe so.
I know so. There will be security cameras.
We're getting, not an operational?
An operational person. Here someone can answer. Also, we can currently, my statement, that there is security cameras.
Want to bring back Mr. Burr's?
Yes, there are security cameras. James Oberle. Yes, there are security cameras. Uh, security is paramount in this operation, uh, is provided twenty-four seven, we have one guardhouse located there, and then we also have a proposed guardhouse, uh, on the Polaris side as well. Uh, and it's number one with US Customs, as you might imagine, uh, that we have security cameras and top line equipment to make sure that this is a safe operation.
You also indicated in your testimony earlier that there were vehicles that were following the truck, the, the, these?
They escorted, yes, they escorted.
And are there vehicles that will circulate at night as well?
Uh, no, that, that's, that's US Customs.
I'm saying Customs, you want to provide that?
No, not, not.
Lighting on the property, so it's a well-enacted lane?
Yes, it is.
It is.
That was Mr. Burr's answer.
Mr. Hill? Any other questions, Mr. Burr's? Uh, I have one question, Schall first, regarding the security considerations, are the Elizabeth Police Department or are, uh, products of the operation familiar with it in case there is a need? Go ahead and bring Mr. Burr's back up. Mr. Oberle, I'm sorry, Mr. Oberle.
Currently have the Port Authority Police on the warehousing side, and we also have private, our own internal private security, uh, that will man the guardhouses and we have our own private security.
But that's not the property that's on the port's property, your warehouse?
And that will also be, uh, provided on the proposed facility.
Commissioner Schall's question, the way I understand it is, will the Elizabeth Police Department be in on what's going on on this property so they can provide backup?
Well, they certainly did notify and receive comments, but I'm saying, you know.
We haven't provided, we haven't had specific dialogue to that effect.
But the Port Authority Police will be aware of this project even though it's, this property goes sufficiently to Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Hill, any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to briefly call upon our traffic engineer, Mr. Call Penkey. The record of names, Paul K, M B, E, H, N K, E, nine eight nine nine drive, Lawrenceville thirty. And, uh, Mr. Matt, Mr. Penkey, it's also testified before this board.
Yes, Penkey has appeared before this board, we will accept. Long as your license is just still good, we'll accept your word of, uh?
Record my license is still good.
Good, I'll find your license.
Mr. Penkey, I know that the traffic study was submitted to this board, if you could please provide the highlights of that study.
Certainly, very, very briefly, uh, you've heard this evening, description of the, the operation of this facility, uh, improvements on, on the site, how it will operate and circulate. Uh, as discussed earlier this, this evening, the site has been operated for years, uh, trailer storage operations on the site, and is an active operation, travel happens in and out of the site. Current, uh, property can range from a number of two hundred trips a day, about a hundred vehicles are in and out of the site, based upon which earlier, this evening, the proposed operation is very similar in nature, so from a traffic perspective, it's, it's really, uh, Washington similar, if not slightly less than that, as the last time operated on the site in the past. Uh, from a traffic perspective, required improvement, approval by this board in terms of improvements to the driveway for North Avenue, in my opinion, substantial, by a much better, uh, definition of driveway, a much better location of the driveway, as opposed to, uh, her custom existing on the site for many years, so I think this is substantial safety improvement in terms of, of that, uh, operation of that driveway. And internally, uh, the site circulation is straightforward, there's a water conduit, there's, uh, circulation styles provided to vehicles throughout the site, that with some turning areas, uh, and in my opinion, the site will function safely.
And that would include, uh, emergency vehicles if necessary?
That's correct, right, large vehicles in the site, so emergency vehicles have to be issued for the service.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Commissioners, questions, Mr. Penkey? Have any initial questions?
We have no further questions.
Is Victor, you have any comments?
I have a brief one. Uh, in our review letter, in terms of the way you, uh, gave, um, I've got a comment, the letter of the General Counsel, page two, five, number thirteen, creates a, in false condition of the previous approval, good. of the application, number P-1511, for the, for the, in fact, not the previous, that page. Just a, uh, certification that the previous approval had, that was, I remember about ten, it was about a half. They're still going through the process, being that, like, it's been, uh, not completely in line with traffic, but it is proposed, it is, it is, but we haven't yet passed, and we're, the, 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 and we have a whole, uh, there are several, by, on, several issues with the driveway, it's now, and, uh, as the traffic agreed, that the intensity of use, the intensity of truck, will be similar, not a little less, of the, of the, of the, uh, hopefully in the future, to remind us, the accident, that's one.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments or concerns, or somebody's come forward? Seeing none, Commissioners, this is, very, very, very.
Mr. Chairman, now, since you had your very testimony, now you make the motion that we approve this, uh, application.
Motion by Commissioner Councilman Goldman, seconded by Commissioner Callahan, part of this board role.
Councilman Goldman?
Aye.
Commissioner Councilman?
Aye.
Commissioner Servai?
Aye.
Commissioner Cavett?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Yes. Can we take a five-minute break? We have one more, I have business, so that's the conclusion.